Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The call is Tuesday, February 19th, Prattville City Council Meeting to order. As to everyone who stands for a pledge allegiance to the American flag invocation by Councilman Bowles tonight.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Frank.
Dear and Father, I come to you tonight to ask you for your wisdom, your guidance on this board and on this body, Lord. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. Thank you for letting us live in this country and have a voice and have an open forum like we do. Lord, I pray that you bless the mayor, bless the city employees, and bless this city, Lord. Be with everybody throughout the rest of the week, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chamblyss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Meeting is called to order to character trait for the money's forgiveness, clearing the record of those who have wronged me and not holding a grudge. Have approval of the minutes from council meeting on February 5th. We have a motion.
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes, signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes have been approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. Anyone like to speak concerning the issue on this agenda? Mayor, do you have a report?
I have a short one, believe that or not. We just had our State of the City address and want to thank everybody for showing up for that, but went through quite a few of the goals and the objectives for this administration over the next year and includes this body working very closely with this mayor and my administration and look forward to the future for this great city of ours, for all of us, because we are in this all together. But as far as report, that's the end of my report, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Any comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
While we're going through this meeting, let me make it be known that I'm suffering from dehydration. If you see me trying to speak, been ill over the weekend and they've tried to revive me at the emergency room, so I'm stumbling a little bit. I'm still weak, but I'm trying to maintain, so that should be the reason. Thank you. Counselor Striplin, report.
Very briefly, sir. The sanitation committee will need to have a meeting in the next two weeks, and I'll check with the committee members to find out what's a convenient time.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Chamblyss?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
With that, we will move on to our agenda items. Resolution number one was to appoint Jimmy Morris Jr. to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. It was held from our February 5, 2013 meeting. Be any more discussion on this resolution?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'd like to hold this indefinitely. I'm making that form of motion.
Form of a motion to hold indefinitely, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Chamblyss. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution will be held. Resolution number two is to grant a retail beer license, all premise only, and retail table wine license, all premise only, to Chatel Patel of Homme Chevie LLC doing business as Corner Market. This also was held from February 5th, 2013 meeting. Be further discussions on it. Counselor Starnes?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to hold this resolution until the second meeting of June.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chamblyss. Any discussion on this? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution will be held also. Resolution number three is to express the intent of the City Council to request state legislation to modify the method of abating weeded or overgrown properties within the corporate city limits of the city of Prattville. Any discussion on this? Counselor Bowles?
Yes, sir. Been working hand to hand with Senator Taylor. The league has come up with a very similar, almost identical ordinance as this one. We feel like it would be better if the league took it instead of the city, and so we're going to ask to hold this and allow the league to take it, and Senator Taylor's working with them to move this quickly, and he feels like this is the quickest way to get what we're needing, so I'm going to ask to hold this indefinitely.
Have a motion to hold. Have a second. Second by Counselor Striplin. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Number four is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the Engineering Department, Street Division. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Engineering Department, Street Division, and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. 1986 Bluebird bus, VIN 1BAB1CMA5GF070749. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to scrap said vehicle and that proceeds be deposited into the general fund. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Counselor Boone. In order for this to be considered tonight, rules must be suspended. Have a motion. Motion by Counselor Bowles to suspend the rules. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Chamblyss. All in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye. Signify by raising your right hand, I'm sorry. This ordinance is up for discussion. Any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passed. Number five is an ordinance to surplus one vehicle from the Police Department. Counselor Chamblyss, will you read it, please?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the Police Department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. A 1998 Toyota Tacoma pickup, VIN 4TAWN74N2WZ041966. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle on govdeals.com and that the proceeds be deposited into the drug proceeds account. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Starnes. This is an ordinance also, the rule must be suspended. We have a motion.
So moved.
Counselor Striplin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brown. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Any further discussion on this ordinance? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This ordinance passes. Resolution number six is to authorize release of funds to purchase a Conica Minolta Bizub 284 printer, copier, scanner from Royal Office Equipment for the Judicial Department at a cost of $6,395. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Judicial Department is in need of a reliable printer, copier, scanner, and whereas the cost of said printer, copier, scanner is $6,395, and whereas this is a budgeted expense for the Judicial Department, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the purchase of one Conica Minolta Bizub 284 printer, copier, scanner from Royal Office Equipment for the Judicial Department, and funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY 2013 budget line item Judicial Department capital outlay. Mr. President, so moved.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Starnes. Discussion on this resolution. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes. Resolution number seven, to authorize the mayor to submit a joint recycling program application to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management in partnership with the Todd County Commission. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville is eligible to submit a grant application for funding assistance made available by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management for recycling program, and whereas the city of Prattville is proposing to sponsor a joint application for recycling program funding in partnership with the Todd County Commission, and whereas no matching funds are required in order to submit a recycling grant, now therefore be resolved by the city of Prattville as follows. Section one, that the city of Prattville submit a recycling program grant application to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Section two, that Bill Gillespie Jr. in his capacity as a mayor is hereby authorized to submit a said application on behalf of the city of Prattville and take other such actions as may be necessary to obtain or request financial assistance. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Be any discussion on this motion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes also. Resolution number eight, to amend the FY 2013 budget to ratify and affirm the purchase of one 2,005 Dodge Ram 2,500 from ADECA surplus property division at a cost of $11,800 and to transfer balance of the budget line item hazardous materials cleanup to budget surplus. Counselor Chamblyss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville recently purchased one 2,005 Dodge Ram 2,500 VIN 3D6WR26D45G840124 from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs surplus property division for the Police Department at a cost of $11,800 from FY 2013 budget line item Police Department capital outlay. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that FY 2013 budget line item Police Department hazardous materials cleanup is hereby decreased by $11,800 and that FY 2013 budget line item Police Department capital outlay is increased by $11,800. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that FY 2013 budget line item Police Department hazardous materials cleanup is hereby decreased by $14,075 and that FY 2013 budget surplus is hereby increased by $14,075. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the city of Prattville does hereby ratify and affirm the purchase of one Dodge 2,005 Dodge Ram 2,500 at a cost of $11,800 by the city of Prattville from the ADECA surplus property division. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowles. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. This resolution passes also. Resolution nine is to authorize hiring of one police officer for the Police Department and annual cost not to exceed $51,964. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Police Department has a need to hire one police officer due to a vacancy, and whereas the City Council of the city of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the annual cost of such employee will not exceed $51,964 for salary and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that up to $51,964 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring one police officer, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from fiscal year 2013 budget line items Police Department salaries and wages, workers' compensation, retirement, group health insurance, group life insurance, and FICO. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring processes budgeted. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Excuse me. Resolution number nine has been read and introduced. We have a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion or any discussion on this resolution? If not, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. All opposed, by a like sign. Resolution number 10. Someone assigned that? Mr. Bowles, would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas government pay payment services and corporate GPS has assembled and supported the Government Pay Net Payment Network consisting of governmental entities that have each contracted with GPS to accept payment on their behalf, made by cardholders through GPS, and whereas GPS accepts credit cards and debit cards from cardholders and executes payment made by these cardholders to participants in the Government Pay Net Payment Network, and whereas in order to improve the city services and enhance administrations, the city of Prattville Municipal Court Department desires to join Government Pay Net Pay Services Network and accept payment through GPS, and whereas there is no cost to the city for entering into said agreement, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the city of Prattville hereby authorize and empowers the mayor to enter into a participant agreement with Government Pay Services and Corporate Government Net to accept credit cards payment on behalf of Prattville Municipal Courts and at no cost to the city. I so move.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Chamblyss, will you read, introduce Resolution number 11?
Yes, sir. Whereas the city of Prattville Police Department has a need for five 2013 police interceptor SUV vehicles, and whereas four bids were left for the Police Department for said vehicles, and whereas one sealed bid was received and Gilmore Ford was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $25,365,000 per vehicle, and whereas said vehicles are a budgeted expense for the Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Prattville hereby award bids number 013-003 in the amount of $126,825 to Gilmore Ford for five 2013 police interceptor SUV vehicles, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY 2013 budget line item Police Department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Starnes. Is there any discussion on this resolution? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. Resolution number 12. Counselor Brown, will you introduce this, please?
Yes, sir. Be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville, Alabama as follows. Section one, the council has found and determined and does hereby find, determine, and declare as follows. A, it is in the best interest of the city for the city to refund the following warrants: One, a portion of the city's general obligation economic development improvement warrant Series 2006A; and two, a portion of the city's general obligation economic development improvement warrant Series 2007. B, it is necessary and desirable for the city to authorize the structure and offering to the public market of general obligation warrants of the city of Series 2013 for the foregoing purposes. Section two, subject to Section three and Section five hereof, the city, the council does hereby approve, adopt, authorize, ratify, and confirm: A, the engagement of Merchant Capital LLC as underwriter and Maynard Cooper &amp; Gale PC as bond counsel for the Series 2013 warrants; B, the determination of the proposed structure and sources of payment and uses of proceeds of the Series 2013 warrants by Merchant Capital LLC as underwriter; C, the preparation of the financing document for the Series 2013 warrants by Maynard Cooper &amp; Gale PC as bond counsel; D, the terms and distribution by the underwriter of a preliminary official statement with respect to the Series 2013 warrants on behalf of the city upon completion by the city and is approved by the mayor of the city and the finance director of the city. Section three, the Series 2013 warrant shall be issued upon the following terms. A, the final maturity date of the Series 2013 warrant shall not be later than September 30th, 2027; and B, the Series 2013 warrant shall be issued only if the net present value savings to be achieved by refunding the refunded warrant shall not be less than $500,000. Section four, subject to Section five hereof, the mayor of the city and the finance director of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver the warrant purchase agreement with respect to the Series 2013 warrants upon the terms for such warrants set forth in Section three hereof. Section five, the issuance and sales of the Series 2013 warrants by the city shall be subject to: A, the final approval and authorization thereof of the council, including without limitation the purposes, uses of proceeds, principal amounts, terms of maturity and payment dates, interest rates, offering prices, and redemption prices and terms, and cost of issuance and credit enhancements; and B, the approving legal counsel of Maynard Cooper &amp; Gale PC as bond counsel. Section six, all actions heretofore taken and all agreements, documents, instruments, and notices heretofore executed, delivered, or made by any of the officers of the city with respect to any matters referenced herein are hereby ratified and confirmed. Section seven, all resolutions or parts thereof of the council in conflict or inconsistency with any provision of this resolution hereby are, to the extent of such conflict or inconsistency, repealed. Section eight, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Mr. President, I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. McDowell, I've got a question. Do I need to... How do I handle that? I have a question on this resolution that's just been introduced. Can I ask it as this position, or do I need to pass the gavel?
Oh, all right. Has it already been seconded?
Yes.
Okay, then you would pass the gavel if you want to speak to such.
Chair recognizes Mr. Striplin. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Mosley. The last Finance Committee meeting I was invited to, you provided information about your recommendation as to why we should stick with one series versus another.
Yes, sir.
Is that still?
Yes, sir, that is still the recommendation. The only reason that the 2007 was mentioned is to give us flexibility, so if something major happens between now and the time we actually get to pull the trigger, that we have the option to change our minds. But yes, it is still a recommendation to stick with the 2006As.
It doesn't say that here.
This gives us the option to...
The word "and" is used here and not "or." It gives the impression that we're combining the 2006A and the 2007, the way the document is written.
That's the intent of it, and that's what the bond attorney that I spoke with that wrote this up, said it was not to bind us to do both of them, it was to give us the option to do either and/or.
But that was not the way it was explained to the Finance Committee.
Well, I mean, I didn't write it up. I told them that's how I wanted to do. The bond attorney gave us the flexibility to do both. Because as you know, as you well know, in banking and working with interest rates, interest rates can change very quickly in a short period of time and makes a drastic difference in the amount of savings. But yes, it is still definitely my recommendation to stick with the 2006As.
Gavel is passed back. Is any further discussion on the matter? All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Who will back up and pick up a report on the city finances? Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir. Provided everyone with a packet, should be in front of them. This is pretty standard packet that we've been providing. The first sheet is the revenue reports for the month of January. As you'll see, most of these line items are 25, were 25% through the year on the revenue side on most line items. You will see on the total percent of budget, we are at 39.37% of budget, so that means we're running ahead on the budgeted revenues, which is very positive. And looking at year-to-date on the far right-hand corner, we are 5.15% over last year at this The next sheet is the tax breakdown comparison, showing line by line where we're up, where we're down as far as the tax goes. And the sheet after that actually shows the first quarter for each of those to kind of give you a better picture of where we are through the quarter. As the mayor mentioned, we are up the first quarter compared to last year first quarter. It's not a lot, but it is a slight increase. The next set of sheets is the January expense report by department. As far as the expense side, we're 33.33% through the year. There are a couple of outliers. City clerk operations is a little bit high. That is primarily due to some election supplies costs that were carried over. They were actually expensed in the prior fiscal year, and they haven't cleared out yet. Also, all the govdeals, things that we've sent through govdeals, the fees for that get charged to the city clerk department. And as you know, we've been selling a lot of stuff on govdeals, and that's been hitting the city clerk department pretty hard. Also, you'll see on the last page, the under non-departmental community initiatives, you'll see that's pretty high the percentage on that. That's actually due to the LPGA. The expense actually came through this year. It was just paid because we just got the invoice on it. However, it was a prior fiscal year expense, so that will be backed out once we get the journal entries for the audit. And you'll also see under transferred to group health, it's at 69.79%. That's due to us catching up on those expenses from prior fiscal years. The next set of sheets is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. You will see January, we are still in the black. The year-to-date net number can be a little confusing because it shows that it's negative, however, just like with the general fund, the revenue is lagging, but the expenses are not. So it's actually much better off than that. The next sheet is the wastewater enterprise fund income statement. You will see that it is also running in the black and running positively. The next sheet in the packet is the bank balances. I actually went in and added in the 2011, so now we have the January 2011, 2012, and 2013 balances for each of the city's bank accounts. You will notice that we were able to move from January 2011, total cash on hand for the city was $3,032,000. total cash on hand for the city was $3,032,983. Today, that total is $9,507,000. Another big difference to note is the group health fund account. In January 31st, 2011, that bank balance is $1,184.86. As of January 31st, 2013, that balance was $1,863,000. It's actually over $2 million because we've made the January and February payment. We're completely caught up through the month of February to the group health fund, which is a huge accomplishment. The next sheet you'll see is the citywide accounts payable and debt balance. Since I had three years on the cash side, I wanted to show three years on the debt and accounts payable side, so you can see both sides of the coin. You will notice that January 31st, 2011, the accounts payable and debt balance for the city was $61,790,000. And January 31st, 2013, that balance is $50,292,000. That's a decrease of $11.4 million.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Mosley? Mr. Bowles?
Yes, sir, I noticed that our business license is only about halfway to where it needs to be. Is that because everything hasn't been logged?
What was that?
The business license. Budgeted $44,300, but we've only collected $2,800. Those should have all been paid by now, is the reason.
Well, the deadline to pay is January 31st. That doesn't mean that they all get put in by then. I checked it, and we're very, very close to being completely, fully budgeted on that at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Good report. At this point in our agenda, we are inviting comments from anyone present in the audience. If not, closing comments. Mayor?
Yes, sir. As we all saw, Council President Wood had to be attended to, and he is being looked at over very closely by our first responders, and he's doing well. And, but think if we can all just keep him in our prayers. He just, I believe, had a dehydration like you mentioned earlier there. But also Thursday night, there's a ceremony swearing-in at Destiny Church for Chief Thompson, and he has invited us all to show up. Also, February 26th, next Thursday is Legislative Aggravation Day, and I'll be having some reports on that later, too. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Sterns?
No, sir.
Counselor Chambers?
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
No, sir.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir.
This concludes our meeting this evening. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March 3rd, 2013.